Make you a little nervous there, Sam? Seeing change.
This is the way it's always been.
The reflector projector.
Well, if we're not using this one, I guess.
All right, it is 6 o'clock and we are going to open the public hearing. Do we need a roll call for this, Gail? Okay, so, um, we don't even need an approval of the agenda for this. It's very simple. Um, this is now 6 o'clock and if there's anyone here for public input, uh, the proposal, plan, specifications, and form of contract, an estimated cost of bid issuance, 022019 2019, Gilbert Middle School and High School additions, renovations, and site improvements. This is the public input time.
I have not received anything.
Excellent. Gail, remind me, do we need to wait until 6:10 then to start the regular meetings?
I would say just run.
Okay, excellent. Hearing, no public input. I will close the public hearing.
601.
Thank you all. All right, with that, we can start with the roll call for the official board meeting.
Ryan.
Present.
Tyler.
Here.
Cam.
Here.
John.
Here.
And Deff is absent.
Excellent, and I'm looking for an approval of the agenda. I would like to make one change, which is to move, um, the, under new business construction, 601, up, uh, to sort of the first part, even above the public forum, considering we have nobody here for that, um, so that we can let these gentlemen present what they need to present, we have some discussion, and then they can head out early.
You don't want to make them waste through the whole thing?
I feel a little guilty about that.
Tyler.
But Tyler, if you'd like to, let them stay.
I kind of like the gent- no.
So with that, I'm looking for an approval, sorry, with that one amendment, if that's a-.
So moved.
Second. Oh, all in favor then?
Aye.
All right, stands approved. Um, so we're gonna go right ahead into 601, new business construction, and that's considered in action to approve the proposed plan, specifications, form of contract, estimate a couple of costs of 2019 Gilbert Middle School and High School additions and renovation. Um, and with that, I believe that, love to, have you walked us through the, the submitted bids?
Do we, uh, do we want to, do, we need to approve the hearing, the 601A? Do we want to do that quick?
Oh, thank you, yes.
Um, that's what we had the hearing on?
And so we're, I'm sorry, I just wanted to-.
601A.
Needs an approval?
Yes.
That we had a hearing?
Approve the, the proposed plans.
Okay.
Specifications, the form of contract, and the estimate.
Thank you. Excellent, okay, I'm sorry about that. Um, do we have a motion then to approve the proposed plan, specifications, and form of contract?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, stands approved. Thank you, Gail, sorry about that. The split page thing. Okay, so now we're moving on to part B of this, which is to review the bids submitted on December 13th for issuance 02 2019 for the Gilbert Middle School and High School additions and renovations and site improvement. And it sounds like, Adam, you're gonna walk us through the bids and some recommendations, is that right?
That is correct.
Yes, I am, we're learning.
Omar, we amended the agenda to start at 601 construction, and then we're gonna go back. So if you were here for public forum, you just missed it.
All right. Um, what you see in front of you is an overview, a very general overview of all of the packages before, so this spreadsheet has just been condensed not to include all of the bid package line items. Um, so the summation line items that you see here are the same as what they were before, it's just been condensed. Uh, so bid issuance two, this column here, so all of the low bids have been entered. Um, we have a total listed there, which is currently under the overall project budget by about $36,000. Areas that are highlighted, so the two areas that are highlighted in red are areas that have not been bid yet. The top one is the intermediate elementary school, the lower one is the track repair work that is going to be done here at the intermediate school. Um, the line item highlighted in green is, uh, owner cost, so that includes the $550,000 of owner contingency still, uh, that is still in the project, that is for any contingency that is after the bid. So any changes that would be needed to the project, all of those dollars are still included. Uh, also, back up to the two red areas, there is still a 6.5% contingency included in both of those line items. That will stay in the job until we actually bid it out.
Can you remind me, the remaining, what is that, like 1.8 and 1.9 million?
Yeah.
That one, yeah?
Yep.
That would be including the masonry work and things like that that we've pushed off, is that right?
Uh, no.
Okay.
So all of those are included in this number up here.
Thank you.
So we've awarded those.
Okay.
This would be the HVAC renovation work at this building and in, uh, the elementary building.
Thank you.
Um, so all the HVAC and electrical work, and there's a little bit of architectural work as well in this building.
It's already out for bid.
Yeah, the drawings are out, it will, we will receive bids on the 15th of January.
Perfect, thank you.
And that one already, still has contingency built into that as well?
Correct, so if you take 6.5% of that number, that's what the contingency for that is. So if you combine those two, I believe it's about $130,000 between those two items.
Okay.
So that's the big picture.
And just to start everybody's clear on that bottom contingency, the 550, that's, that's when we get to construction.
Correct.
We have some surprises.
Yeah, change orders, and there will be some, I mean, it would be amazing, or it would be disappointing if it hit that number, so there'll be something left from that as well.
Perfect.
But it's a contingency for the construction phase.
That makes sense.
Now, though, last I remember, we didn't really have a plan forward on the track. Did we kind of come up with something for that?
Um, I'll say no, not, not yet.
Okay.
Um, so initially, uh, Hala had talked to some vendors, and they came out and looked at the track and proposed a repair process, and that's how they initially set the budget. Um, they had maybe one or two more vendors that came out and looked at it and said, "Well, I don't know if our initial plan will work, um, but there's probably something else that could work. We just haven't gone down that road yet," and Sam, maybe if you can add some more definition around that?
Right, so we're, right now, we're working on a kind of a short-term plan to fix the cracks in some of the pending safety issues. And, um, we're waiting to hear back from a couple of those vendors on what a timeframe could be to make those repairs, as well as an estimated cost of arriving at those repairs. Um, we think it's under the 78 grand, um, but not sure yet, so pending more information, but to, as an immediate response, we're working on a short-term proposal to make sure things are okay in the spring, but-
Safety-wise.
Safety-wise.
Yep.
But that's also pending if their availability, if the window of opportunity to do the work can be done between now and March 11th, the beginning of the track season.
So it's just a, Tim, that was the issue is really all we're talking about.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to devise a longer-term solution, and we'll talk with Tim and then his group, and ultimately arrive at a decision with the board as well, but that's just not, not ready for tonight.
As we've been meeting the last week since the bids came in with the athletic facility committee, and then last night with the boosters, I mean, that was a suggestion that I had is that the staff work together with this team to have a long-term plan. Because Hala can come and say, "Well, let's just tear it all out," or come back and say, "Let's build another track," but I specifically asked Mr. Pizzetti last night, I said, "So please work on what do you think you're gonna need in five or 10 years," and then let's work towards that.
Work towards that.
So I think the immediate is, there's, should be plenty of money to fix from a safety standpoint, and then, then it'll be, okay, well, what's the long-term plan for it?
And that line item will stay in the budget until a plan is devised and the work is, can be completed. And now, the second sheet, similar to what was sent out in your packet, there have been some things added to it. Uh, so, as an overall, we would recommend acceptance of all of the low bidders that are listed here. Um, each package, I did add how many bids we've received, so the concrete, which is the exterior paving and the sidewalks, we've received four bids. JAS Construction was low, an amount of $469.57. Bid package 061, which is really the general construction bid package. Uh, RH Gray Ball was the only bidder, uh, they were under budget for that package. Uh, bid package 081, aluminum windows, doors, curtain wall, we had five bids. Horning Glass was low on that package. Uh, package 091, which is the chipboard painting ceilings, we had two bidders. HSI was the low bidder on that package. Uh, package 092, the flooring, we had two bids. Phillips Floor was the low bidder on that, um, almost exactly out budget. Uh, package 111 is the field construction, we had one bidder, um, Iowa Athletic Field Construction. Uh, package 121, the seating, um, sorry, the bleachers and the press box, uh, we had three bids. Seating and Athletic Fuel Enterprises was the low bidder on that, that was under budget as well. Uh, 151 is the fire suppression systems, we had three bidders. Midwest Fire Sprinkler, who currently takes care of all the maintenance of, uh, those systems in your buildings currently, so that was nice to see. Uh, they were the low bidder. Uh, 152 is the mechanical plumbing, we had four bids, good coverage. Uh, ACI Mechanical, local to Ames, uh, was the low bidder. And then Electrical, 161, we had three bids, and Vanmont Electric was the low bidder. Yep.
On the, on that field construction, is that problematic that we only had one bid there, or is that, is that specialty that it's hard to get multiple bids, or something about that?
So what we ran into, uh, the Iowa Cubs, also, they have a company that builds baseball fields, softball fields. Um, what we ran into was all of their work that was supposed to be done this fall, didn't get done. So their schedule then pushed out to the spring-
Okay.
-to finish their work. So we ran into that with actually two bidders that the schedule that we have, they couldn't meet because of their work kind of ran over. Um, I don't know that it's problematic. Overall, we're under budget. Um, I don't, I don't see an issue with it.
Okay.
Uh, so in addition to the low bidders that I just went through for the bid packages, we also then had 12 alternates. Um, many of those alternates were deductive alternates in case we came in over budget. Uh, so alternate four, these are the alternates that were at the middle school, high school, so alternate four, we recommend acceptance. That would add the VOTech, Career Tech, Make-up Air Unit, Grease Center Scepter, and the associated utilities for the career kitchen, or, I'm not sure what exactly that space is gonna be called, but, um, that will be in the new addition and would provide the utilities of the Make-up Air Unit, Grease Center Scepter for further additions for, uh, appliances and, uh, other fixtures after, after the fact and by the district. Uh, we would, um, not recommend acceptance of alternates six through 12, so those were building deduct changes in case we were over budget. So changes to finishes in both the middle school and high school that if we needed to accept some cost reductions, we could have. Um, all of those finishes are in the project, we don't need to reduce or accept those at this point because we're under budget. Uh, all of those alternates were about $90,000, so that's good, we can keep that scope in the project. Um, getting now to athletics, we had a couple alternates for athletics as well. So alternate number one is to deduct the dugout benches, which probably seems strange that we'd take them out, but it is, uh, it is an opportunity for one of the VOTech classes, or all the VOTech classes, to construct them and be a learning opportunity. Um, we've talked, uh, Pizzetti has talked to the teachers, and they feel that that is something that they can tackle, and their classes can tackle. Um, so we would accept, or we would recommend acceptance of removing that scope from the project and letting them, uh, handle that. Uh, alternate number two, we would recommend acceptance, that's adding the backstop, uh, which is the, the wood backstop behind both baseball and softball fields, and then a netting system, that would be in lieu of the, uh, chain link fencing system that is currently in as the base bid. Um, that was an add of $30,000, about $30,600. Uh, and then we would recommend not accepting alternates three and five. Uh, alternate three was for the storage building at the baseball softball field. If we were to accept that, it would put us over budget, as well as, uh, alternate five, which was for upgrading the field lights from standard to LED. Um, alternate number three for the athletic storage building, uh, we've been in discussions with the boosters, they have committed to providing the money and the funds and taking care of and contracting for the actual construction of the building. So they will fund the materials and the erection of the building, uh, outside of this project totally. Uh, that value was about $98,000. Uh, the concrete work and the utility work for the storage building will need to be added through this project. Um, that would be the foundation work and then the chunk of water utility to get from where it was stopped at the irrigation building and continue it on. Uh, that work is about $30,000. There's a couple ways that we can handle that. We can, uh, the board can accept the alternates that those bid packages provided, the alternate pricing that they provided, or we can just change order into the job at a later date. Um, so we can handle it either way.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
When we were constructing, or when the, the barn, or the ag building was built out there?
Yeah.
There was something that I remember that the district, um, there's some rule that it's all or nothing, or that we can't, can we, can we put down the foundation and run the utilities there, even if it's a donated project? Is that okay because of the scope of the work, or?
Yes, and I'm gonna rely on Brian a little bit, but you can, you can do one of two things. So since it was an alternate bid, you can just reject all the alternates-
Okay.
-and not do anything, and then after the fact, we would go out to the two or three contractors that, and offer them a change order and say, "Hey, can you price this added work that we need you to perform?"
Okay.
Um, the storage building, I think we can take all of that scope out, and if the boosters want to donate the money, which I guess they're not donating, they just said they would construct it for the district.
Am I remembering correctly about the ag building?
Yeah, my recollection of that, if everybody's on, was is that, um, we wanted to make sure that if there was a cost associated with getting that, getting power to that, that we assess that, and they said, "We don't need power to it." That was my recollection of that, because we were just wanting to avoid any unforeseen bills, so that's what I recall of that discussion, but there could be more, but that's what I recall about it.
No, I think for that one, that was, the issue was just clarity that the district wasn't willing to do any funding for that.
Until we get it just done.
I think this is close to what happened at the multipurpose stadium, where that shed on the north side was done in a similar manner.
Okay.
That was not done underneath the construction bond, and it was added later by the boosters.
When Mr. Davis did his, he was doing it with those, those funds that they had accumulated, and we made, we made sure that there was an agreement that they understood, they were handling this, and the school was not putting any money towards that.
Okay.
I believe that was correct.
Okay, thank you.
I also spoke with Beth Grob today and just asked that same question, "Hey, can we, can we do this?" Just thinking that we could, and just ran it by her, she said, "Yep, we can, we can do that, we can buy it up and have them come and do it later too," so.
Thank you.
Did, did she have, or did you ask about the two options, either, as I understand it, including the concrete and the utilities for alternate three and accepting those, but rejecting the building, or just rejecting all of alternate three, is that what you're, is there, is there a preferred way?
I ran the, the one that we had discussed earlier, which was-
Rejecting all of it.
Rejecting.
All of it?
Well, rejecting all of it, and then change ordering in utilities and slab. She said that's, that's okay, to do that.
That, to me, seems like that might be cleanest.
Yeah.
Right? Rather than saying, "Well, we're gonna go ahead and take the concrete, rather than doing that building, we're gonna," right? I'd be, I'd be in favor of just rejecting all of alternate three and bringing it back as a change order, whatever's needed.
Yeah, and, and I can ask Beth about the other option as well, but, I mean, she did, she'd have cleared that route.
Right, and we already have a price for that work, so.
Right, in theory, that should be the price.
Absolutely.
So in summary, essentially through the whole bidding process, all the alternates related to the school projects are included. There's no need for deduction or reduction of quality, currently, that's, which would be alternate six through 12.
Yep.
We'd take further funding out for the dugout benches. Uh, did the boosters talk about providing the materials, because there would be some material costs?
Yes, so I know at our smaller group meeting, they said, and Rick confirmed outside of that meeting afterwards, that they would cover it if needed. I don't know if it was discussed at the booster meeting the other night.
Not when I was in there last night, but, but all I'd heard afterwards was that they had proposed to do the storage buildings. So essentially, everything's covered with what we initially set out for, with the exception of the storage building, and the boosters are willing to do that.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, exactly right, yeah, so we're getting the, the full scope of what we've been planning and dreaming, and actually, and a handful of more things from kind of midway through, kind of reassessing, and we folded some more things in, if you recall, you know, midway through, so.
HVAC, elementary HVAC, intermediate, and middle school track remain to be done.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
But funding is still a bit.
Funding's still there.
So those are line items that are still in the budget that are-
With more contingencies.
With contingencies built into those.
Yep, we'll find out on the 15th of January, the third issuance end, is that right?
Yep, the issuance three.
Is that the final?
Yes, and there'll be three packages, a general package, which includes everything other than mechanical plumbing and then electrical, so those will be the three packages.
And then as far as timing goes, is, what has to be done by August, and then what just waits to that next semester? Is there anything that has to be done by this August?
Uh, yes, we were going to have the bandroom addition done by this August, and then everything else would fall in that, follow that first semester, we'll say, of school.
Okay.
And then the other spaces would be available, I think now it's like, one's October, one's November, and the other one's December.
Trickling in.
So then everything would be ready to move into, to start the next semester after Christmas. And our goal on the baseball softball fields are to get everything seeded this spring, so that they can grow this spring, and then the following fall, and then essentially, they'll grow for a short period before baseball practice would start in May of 2020.
Same thing with soccer?
Yeah, yep, all that, all those, uh, fields over there.
2020 would be the ti- first time that they could play on those?
Yep.
That'd be great, yeah.
So there's three growing cycles essentially, which is great, which was the target for the original.
Yeah, and I think Snyder recommends two, so I think, I think when we get, we'll be able to seed it, and we'll have irrigation out there, so we'll be able to irrigate, irrigate it to get it to come up quickly-
Yep.
...with that first season, which will be very helpful.
And for practice fields, what was the final, how many of those did we put in, and?
The one soccer field?
One soccer field by the high school.
Yep.
Yep, good.
Little bit of dirt to move before next spring.
Yeah.
They started, right?
In March.
They haven't been doing anything the last week.
No, it's been muddy, which is something the city calls about, up every other day.
Well, from now on, there won't be anything leaving the site, right? Is that correct?
No, so the mud that-
It's off the tires.
It is off the concrete truck tires, yeah, and we have guys out there, they actually pressure wash every truck before it leaves the site, with a pressure washer, to get as much-
Oh, you're saying from the construction?
Yeah.
Like, on the Gilbert Mountain, that, that won't be traffic back and forth anymore?
No, no. And then, yeah, we still have a little bit, that makes it out, which is-
That happens.
We clean it up.
So Adam, what you have left is, until we stop the project for a while, is the footings, is that right?
Yeah, so, uh, they're currently pouring foundations at the high school. Uh, they'll continue through the month of January for both locations, uh, and then we'll be, I'll say, at a standstill until late February or early March, when, um, we'll get back in there and start doing utilities and-
Hard to believe we'd have 50-degree weather in December.
Yeah, I know.
Has this been good, do you feel like, or on track with what we're doing?
Yeah, I think so.
Good.
Uh, I know, I stopped up there yesterday, and constructor was on their way up, it, it was a mud pit at the high school, just because of, the warm weather now has-
Yep.
...fogged the top surface out, so they had to come in and scrape off four or five inches of dirt, make it movable for, for the guys pouring the foundations to get trucks in and stuff like that. But yeah, I think we're on track. You'll see the foundations done and covered up, and there'll be some period of inactivity, uh, and then we'll kick in again, right before spring, to get jump-started and moving forward. I mean, behind the scenes, the steel shop drawings and stuff like that are in and approved, and they'll start working on fabrication, so that when we get to that point, all those materials will be ready, and be ready to hit the ground running.
Yeah. Good for the board.
Excellent. Uh, do we have any further questions on item B in this agenda?
One motion for that, huh?
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask, yeah, we need a motion, right? Yeah, I was gonna ask, we can take a motion if you cover all 10 of these at once, right?
Yeah, so I move to accept the recommended, um, bid packages and alternates as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, stands approved, thank you all. Uh, moving on, let's just, I think we should probably just continue on through CD and a half of this as well, since we're all here, is this all right? The, we're talking about, uh, so this would be, so moving back here on six.
Change order D, are we on E?
On C.
C.
Okay.
Discuss and take possible action on bid submitted on December 13th for issuance 2019, uh, renovation and site improvements?
That's what we just-
We just, oh, I'm sorry, we reviewed on my, on my mistake, we reviewed, sorry.
We reviewed them, and then C is actually taking action on the review.
Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to D, discuss change order number two for the 2018 renovation from HPC for relocating door hardware to the gym doors and repair wall for $1,100. Is there any?
Just what it says, uh, just, uh, when we did the cafeteria in Stacy's building, uh, there was some cracks, and we wanted to make sure that those were done, since we were painting it.
Oh, that's right.
Those were filled, and then, uh, as you come into her building, you can go over to the gym, and they made sure that that hardware there, I don't know if you call it the Moleon or whatever, that everything, is that what it is, Sam?
Yeah.
Okay, that, uh, that everything was lockable there, we were making sure that it's, uh, safe and secure, it seemed, does it seem to be working from your end? Move approval.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, stands approved. And then, amendment, so moving to E, amendment number four for the 2019 intermediate and elementary mechanical and electrical and plumbing renovation projects, project. Do we have any background on this?
You want me to weigh in on that, or?
I would, oh, sorry.
Sure, or, Lenny, did you wanna?
Uh, I just, I just have put down that we, I, my recommendation is that we go ahead and approve amendment number four for this, but go, do you want to add something?
This is for the boilers.
Yeah, for the, the- Added scope of replacing two boilers in the project, so the amendment was for $1,2,500 for additional fee from the engineer in our firm to-
To throw them.
-fold that into the project, yeah, fold it into the project, which would be good.
So we're gonna move from a, two boilers that we have now that are 80% efficient to boilers that are, what, 90-some percent efficient?
I don't even know if ours are 80%.
We will see efficiency. You know, Adam?
I don't, I was thinking, the guy from KCL said they were 95s, the ones that would go in. go in.
The new ones are 95.
Yeah. I don't know what you currently have, my guess is it's below 80.
Yeah.
It's my guess.
I know there's a size difference.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stands approved, thank you for that. And then finally, on the new construction portion, resolution to accept 2018 renovation projects as being fully complete, establishing, establishes the date of acceptance of its completion as of December 20th, that is today, 2018. The remaining funds for the project shall be dispersed by the district in accordance with the contract documents and the requirements of the Iowa Code, Chapter 573.
Danielle, I have that up there, Danielle suggested that additional remaining funds, so we added that into the language here.
You lost me, what's this one for?
Isn't it just closing the doors on the elementary and intermediate?
Yeah, essentially, it's the final paperwork to.
For the work that we did last summer.
Yeah.
This building and the.
Punch list is done.
It's done, verified completion by art.
And there's the retainage. Like there's the retainage and money, something that can be raised.
How do we come out? We come out right where we thought we would?
As far as budget-wise?
Yeah.
I believe we were.
Yeah, I mean, there's a handful of change orders that we've even discussed today, but yeah, I think we're still within the contingency that we provided, I think so, I'd have to check the numbers on that one.
And we have no work left to be done. Stacy and Amy are satisfied with that all projects are, not that I doubt you, but.
It really looks nice, if you haven't had a chance to go down there, I mean, if you hadn't been on our buildings before, it looks like it's just part of what was originally built.
Do I have a motion for this?
Some moved.
Second.
I don't know, you can sort that one out, yeah, I'll take it.
He made the decision already.
I think all three of them moved on that one, but okay, so all in favor, you all said it already, so there we go, okay. Stands approved, thank you. Thank you all, gentlemen, for coming, appreciate that.
Thanks for all your work, guys.
Merry Christmas, guys.
So let's move back here to agenda number three, which is public forum, which we skipped over.
They screwed out. They screwed out, and we took that picture.
Yeah, they didn't wanna say.
Okay.
I think that they had some.
They had a conflict.
Yeah, so yeah, so prior to this meeting, yeah, we had, we had Ames Home Builder Association came in, they gave $1,600, right, I didn't say the dollar amount here, towards Danny Jones and some of the projects that were going on here, so it was very generous of them, they took a great picture. But then also Omar, for public forum, if you'd like, you have, oh, five minutes.
No complaints.
Stand right in front of the camera.
All right. Excellent, thank you. Reminder, you have, you can build some complaints by the time we get down to the end of this agenda as well.
They can be just comments.
Oh, yeah, they can be, they can be happy thoughts, too.
No, 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 they don't have to be complaints.
That's true, okay, so moving on to oral reports four, the 2018-19 priorities update. I'm looking at that, Kim, is this, this is what you have been working on, is this right?
This is the hopeful, well, no, it's not, it's the revision incorporating Tyler's recommendations, some conversation with Brian, and it's really just, I think, been worked through, we're certainly willing to talk about it, we'd just really like to get those posters up if you're working. Lindsay?
One of the, one of the things that we talked about pretty heavily last night was, if you take a look at that, whether, you guys are making this tough for you guys, someone has bad eyes to see. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Whether we should possibly, you know, move that defined Gilbert portrait of a graduate, I'm not saying that one's any less important or more, but maybe flip-flopping that one with that second main bullet there. I don't know what your thoughts are, we talked about that a little bit after last night's meeting. Or we can leave it the same, I know they're both very important. Have any thoughts?
Well, just, you know, some of the conversation that all just showed that Lindsay and I had, a lot of our conversation last night was really around, these are district priorities, and our main priority coming out of last night, I felt, was the long-range strategic planning.
Three to five-year priorities.
And so to move that into a first position, not diminishing the importance of Portrait of a Graduate, but that truly is an educational initiative that these folks are taking care of, and if we're looking at district priorities, I think they should flip, if that's agreeable.
Makes sense.
Okay, so what are you actually doing?
Move approval with Kim's amendment to flip, to just put the, under the 21st century learning, to put the engaged district as the number one bullet, and then define the Gilbert portrait of a graduate as the second bullet, and then approve it as is.
And is this something then with that change that we can go ahead, and I can put it out to you if you wanna see it before that, but can we go ahead and get something as far as a poster and get that rolling?
Okay, yeah, I mean, if we have a second and we, oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump.
I think you might have to wordsmith it to get back onto a poster now, but I appreciate the work that's been done, and I think the conversation last night was good, so I agree with prioritizing that after the conversation last night, and if you scroll down a little bit, Gail, you know, under strategic resourcing, that's good, you know, it's essentially that first bullet point of our strategic resourcing was the other major goal, right, was what's a, what's a long-term staffing plan, right? And knowing that we've got immediate needs, but let's start looking at, what, five years from now, what does the administrative staff look like, how are we gonna expand? So I think, I feel good that there's some alignment there, so that one seems to fit with that second bullet point. And then after that, I'm, I'm good with that, I think you'll need wordsmithing to get down to a, to a poster, but is the staff good with this? Because, I mean, we're December 20th, and hopefully that's pretty much the direction we've been going, so that we say that is the direction we're going.
I think that is what, that's what we're working towards.
Yeah. So I second it.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, stands approved, print the poster with the amendment that we talked about, just get a big poster, you don't need to keep all the words. Kim, thank you, Kim and everyone and staff, thank you for all your work on this, I know this was, this is a lot, but I think all of us here, as Tyler said, feel really good about the direction of this. All right, we'll move on to four, two administrative reports, I know that Mike had, I believe, Mike had emailed us, Mike Wilson had emailed us some information that unfortunately with our schedule change, his staff couldn't make it, but I don't wanna forget that piece of it around some of the work that his, him and his team are doing, but yeah, are there other administrative reports?
I have some that I would like to, am I jumping in in front of anyone else?
No, I don't, I think that we, no.
Okay, Gail, can you bring up the, one of the things that I'd like to share with you, and I kinda prefer, let's go with the staffing, just general staffing.
Well, we got.
I had mentioned to the board last night that one of the things that I would be bringing to their attention are some recommendations for staffing for the 2019-2020 year. There's been a lot of discussion about this, this is, you can just talk to any of the people that are to my left, everyone has been actively a part of this and trying to see where our needs are for our district and how we can actually handle those needs. I'm gonna go through these briefly, I don't wanna necessarily read everything to you.
Can I ask one question as you're going through? These are in priority order?
No.
Okay.
I wouldn't say that.
Okay.
Just to give you a little bit of background on the process, so Gail had worked with our financial people to kinda give us an idea based on our enrollment, and we could look out, so we actually have kind of a Google sheet, where we go through and we can see with how many, the dollars that we have new money every year, and so that was something nice that Gail was able, and from there, we've been able to go through and like, what are the positions we need this year, what are some things that we wanna look forward to, you know, in 2021 and 2022, and so we've used that same process last year, so to create the 18-19 staffing as well, and so there were some things in 18-19 that are now on 19-20, just because, you know, you get to a number and then you're like, we don't have anyone.
And then when we finished the year, and then we, we sat down and figured, Travis and I worked out the five-year plan on what it looked, what do we have after we finish the fiscal year, so it looked like we could stay, meet our solvency goal if we plugged in a $300,000 additional staff, additional, excuse me, additional funding for additional staff if needed, so additional expenditures, let's just say that.
Beyond salary increases.
Beyond that, yeah, over, yes, we already plugged it, what we do is we plug in anticipated percent of salary settlement, along with, you know, some other growth areas, and we're planning on a 0% allowable growth again. So with all that, you know, we plugged in $300,000, we were still able to meet our solvency, and we're even getting to the point that that will help us down the road for cash reserve and some things, so we were able to see where we're headed, and so we came up with a plan that our fiscal year 20 budget would be additional $300,000 that they were working with, and then right now, we've just plugged in $100,000 and $100,000 for the next two years after, and like last year, I think 300 was actually 250 or 240, then we increased it to three after we analyzed where we were at, so the 100 and 100 is just what we have plugged in right now for the future, but those can change as we move forward. So we come to the administration meetings and we look at, okay, if we do this and this, how much does that gotta cost us, and look at our bottom number of $300,000, which also we have costed staff moving over, lane changes is in there, we've accommodated that, so.
Wow. That's a lot of forecasting abilities, that's really great.
Well, it just really, it really paints a, it's a roadmap, I, it's a roadmap of where we wanna go and achieve, so it works out well.
Thank you.
And that financial tool that she's talking about, she does a great job of working with our team, I feel that we know now more than we have, I don't know, you guys can, you know, testify to this, too, than we ever have before about where we're at financially. And, you know, and it's a challenge, because one of the things as we start to grow and as we start to build and as we start to add staff, we wanna make sure that we have a handle on that. Any of the things that I have down here are not, just to let you know, we have some early retirements, we actually have five of those, so that, let's say that if there was an early retirement that was out there, it would be a replacement for that, I didn't put that necessarily, I think that you probably know that that's a given. Let's take a look at the, and again, I don't wanna draw things out, but I wanna make sure everyone feels comfortable.
As he said that, we also take in consideration a scenario of the savings for those positions is built into this whole scenario, so.
And then to add to what she said, is the fact that we take into consideration, too, as far as if they move over on the salary schedule, and we have, we have that happening with a lot of our teachers, too. The first one is basically adding, this would be a new offering, a halftime middle school exploratory, what we're looking at is this would be the, in preparation for six sections at the middle school.
Can you get to the drop box?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, not within the agenda, or what's the, I'm sorry, what's the document number?
It's 4.02.2. It's in the reports.
Sorry, got it, thank you.
So this would be an exploratory at the middle school, again, making the move to where we're gonna need to be moving to six sections as we get bigger, this is doing it with an exploratory teacher. Anything you guys wanna add to that?
That would be so that when we do go to that sixth section, we're not all of a sudden, oh my gosh, we've gotta do the exploratory, we've gotta do the core teachers, so this is just being, this is really being pro.
Similar in how we added the reading position, six years ago, I think, in preparation for five.
Is it realistic to hire a halftime?
Yes.
Are we helping to combine?
Especially compared with the.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got, I mean, there could be some of that that will happen.
Okay.
When you go to a sixth section, how many total teachers would that involve? I mean, simplistically, you can say, well, that's three, but how many?
I think that at that point, we're gonna have to look at maybe how those can, like right now, we have a core teacher at each grade level, we might have to look at some way of being a little more creative in how we're doing that, so, I mean, we might have maybe our, for example, we could have our social studies teachers where they're gonna pair up, you know, two will teach, you know, share sixth and seventh, or some such a, some such configuration like that.
Because in the elementary, I mean, this, when we get there, I mean, that seems to be pretty straightforward, that's one, one-to-one, right?
Yeah, I would say if I were about, it would be about when we go full across the board, six teachers, it's gonna be about six staff, and the reason, you're gonna have those three core locations and then that exploratory, so that we can maintain that common planning, that kind of, so when it's all said and done, I think that would be the next.
For all the buildings, or, or you're just talking about?
Just middle school at this point.
Yeah, but at elementary, for example.
Middle school, yeah, elementary, we can kinda go six sections teacher for a while, and then it's kind of when we hit that seven section, that's when our, it really, the specials piece gets impacted.
Wouldn't you, I know Amy's not here, but same in?
Yes.
Intermediate or not?
Yeah, we both, we talked, in fact, we talked this today at Edmonton about the fact that six sections, we can't, it's not comfortable, but it's doable with the current staffing, it's then when we jump to that seventh that we have to make that move and.
So, not to jump back to last night, but that sort of stuff, I think, would be really great in the board planning, right? So we asked Lindsay, hey, project out five years or even more, mainly thinking about administrative, but it helps us, I think, too, to know when we do go from five to six sections, what does that mean for each building?
Absolutely.
Or like Stacy said, when we go to seventh, then that's a turning point.
If you take a look at number two, it's a halftime middle school special ed teacher, this is a numbers-driven type of thing, again, the, that's what makes this challenging as far as our special ed, and I know that you probably say, well, you know, try to watch where we're at with the special ed budget, we do try to watch that, but we're, if we have a child that has special needs and they come into the district, our job is to go ahead and make sure we provide an education for them, that may mean, an associate, that may mean, it could mean anything from almost a specialized teacher, but our numbers, this is more of a number-related thing.
Well, we also had a discussion as do you, do we look at hiring another associate that would, could be in a classroom versus going with, with another teacher, and really, if we're gonna look at what's best for kids, and then, and what, when we're looking at our count of students that will be at the middle school next year, this is what's better for kids. And in that is reference the specialized delivery plan matrix, so that's different than our, kind of that matrix we use for class size, and I don't know, John, were you on that team when we did that, I don't know if maybe you were the board member, so every five years, we develop our district specialized delivery plan, just talks about the continuum of services we'll offer, and part of that is basically an equation that we look for to see a roster size per teacher, so one thing, and, you know, interesting, one thing that we're finding is our kiddos with behaviors are the students who tend to kind of, we might have in the past been able to serve more kiddos on a roster if they were a reading IEP or math IEP, but it's when we start to get into some of those behavior plans and things, that those rosters get a little difference, and so we kinda went into the, even this planning with kind of three goals in place, and one being our behavior, mental health, along with just general class size and new programming were kind of our three overall goals, and that's one that I think Amy's feeling it this year with her matrix, and then that will just hit Mike's building next year.
And we have to weigh heavier for behavioral problems.
Yeah, so right now, the way our district, and that's something we as a district can evaluate, how we, the different components we put into that matrix and what we want to weigh is heavier, right now, the way our current plan is, and because it does require the most time, if a student has a behavior intervention plan, the student has associate time, those different things, students on alternative assessment, those are all kind of things that can weigh a roster a little differently.
If you take a look at number three, we've talked about this, you know, at different times, the proposal would be that we have a 1.0 FTE associate principal, there's dropout prevention dollars, and I'll talk about that a little bit later, we're gonna use a little bit of that with this, and I'm gonna say a few things and I'm gonna let Vic talk a little bit about, I think that as we look at our high school, we're gonna be probably pushing next year right around 500 kids. 500 kids is a lot for one person to be able to handle. 500 kids is a lot for one person to be able to handle with the, to be the educational leader to get, make sure that the discipline is handled, to make sure that the evaluations are done. And I'm not short of changing Vic at all, I think that he's done a very nice job with that. But as we look at schools our size, it's very, very common to have that person in there, so that, I think you look at it and we talked about it here, you know, we can help with the supervision, we can also make sure that staff instructional leadership is there too. I don't want anyone to ever think that we're not having that, but we're getting to the size where I think that there needs to be help there. Vic, you want to add anything?
No, I mean, I think you're right on, you know, we're knocking on the door of 500 right now. We've got two big classes coming with 20 more than our current graduating class, so, you know, we'll be closer to 530, you know, in two years. I mean, that's getting to be a pretty large high school. There are days where it's difficult to get out of the office due to issues and things that are going on, which makes it hard to be an instructional leader. So I just think being able to share that load at the size we are makes me a more effective leader, it's better for kids, it's better for staff. I just think it's all around a good move. We've, you know, had some discussions on this for a couple of years now, and, you know, most of the schools that are our size and larger have, you know, assistants and associate principals to help share that load, you know. And I think it's also a good thing for our admin team to bring in more people, fresh ideas. It's good for myself to have someone to bounce ideas off of that's in the building with me. I get, you know, get a good opportunity with our current team, but having someone in the building. There are times where I have to attend plenty of meetings and, you know, the building is, you know, unsoled at times, but we're fortunate to have good staff and good kids to be able to do that. But it'd be nice to have people there to, you know, be there in case things pop up. I just think it's a, you know, it's a good timing right now.
There's a lot of discussion that's happened over the last several years about the pressure on the counselor. Do you see this person as being able to alleviate some of the workload from Paul at the same time?
Well, we have, we've added a second counselor, so.
Do you feel like things are, are in a, at a better, in a better place than they were before?
Yeah, absolutely. And they're, you know, basically splitting it up nine, 10, 11, 12. And so, you know, not focusing on, one person focusing on 500 students, one person is focusing on 250.
Right.
Jordan, at the ninth and 10th grade levels, is still spending some time at the middle school, so she's getting to know those eighth graders, so when they come to ninth grade, you know, she already has some established relationships. She also knows the scheduling at the high school, so she can be very involved with the eighth grade transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, yeah, it's great.
Okay. I just didn't know with the focus on mental health that we're taking, if you felt things are in a good place, or if this person might be able to help.
And depending on, you know, what you, what you get for applicants, you're looking for people that have those skill sets also. You know, that is a little bit of my background. You know, there are things that are not my strengths, strength areas, which would be nice to bring people in that bring in fresh ideas, help me, you know, up my game a little bit. I think it's, it's a good add.
I would have had the same question, but then also, I mean, there's been, and maybe it's just title, I don't know, which is why I'm asking, but dean of students or something along that order. So that's also kind of where, I think our request last night for Lindsay for long-term planning was, what does that look like as it grows? Because I don't know what that role would do as opposed to an associate principal.
We've spent some time doing some research, and, you know, Gail's tried to dig up some information, and I've done a lot of phone calls and digging around with my network of people. Typically, deans look at, are looking at more doing a little more of scheduling, they're looking at more of doing attendance-related things, they're doing some more things related to discipline, more of your entry-level things, whereas I think you bring in somebody that has the skill set to be an instructional leader along with your high school principal, and, you know, you're looking to give them more duties. Dean of students don't necessarily have to have an administrative degree either, and so that changes what they can and can't do.
And for the needs that you see right now, as the school has expanded, it better fits the associate principal.
Yes.
And then one last question, so as you, which will also, I think, be more laid out in a plan, but if you add, if you added a role like that, does that person also participate in the administrative team, or how big is that administrative team? I mean, that's kind of the thought process of what does that look like?
I think definitely they would be a part of our administrative team. That's just, you know, whether it says, you know, associate principal or principal, that's my opinion that we should be bringing them in, and if they're going to be an educational leader, we want to make sure that they're on board with what we're doing.
And, you know, they may not attend every single thing, but, you know, I would think that our administrative team meetings, they would be there to be an integral part of carrying out the district plan. You know, they're, they're players, key players in the, in the building, so they need to know what's going on, they need to have a stake in it. But there may be times where I'm attending meetings and filling them in on things, there may be times where they're attending some things while I'm dealing with issues of this or that. Really, right now, all we, all that's really left to do is just kind of to look at the job description and kind of figure out duties and how we want to split some things up, and then, you know, see what candidate pool looks like, come up with a process for screening candidates and interviewing.
Any other questions on that? If you're wondering, I can count, it does sound one, two, three, you know, five. What we had was we had different things in there, so that's why you're seeing that. If you take a look at number five on your sheet, the, the challenge has been that the state has come out and passed some recent legislation concerning computer science instruction and what needs to be done as far as different things that are out there. I think if you had a chance to be at our forums, at least one or two, we've had the question that's been brought up from community members about what are you doing in your district to address some of the community, or the computer science requirements? We've tossed this one around, and I don't want to, again, steal the high school thunder. We talked about where, where does this need to go and how does this one need to come about? And our feeling was that as we look at, and by the way, the state is not very clear on their recommendations as far as the computer science, we felt that this was something that we wanted to go ahead and add to our overall staff. Point five, that's, might be a challenge for Mr. Van Appel to try to find that, but we do feel like we're making steps in the right direction as we look down the road for computer science. Vic, you want to add anything to that?
No, but I think Mr. Beecher's correct, the state has mandated that computer science will be offered, and, but not given a lot of guidance. Currently, they, they're in the process, they've been developing what the certifications and endorsements for the teachers will look like, that's not even been nailed down yet. So getting ahead of the game is something I would be interested in doing. I think it's a 21st century world where we need to be looking at, you know, offering these types of offerings. There's a demand within our community. In the short time I've been here, I've been at two forums where it's been brought up. We do offer some computer courses, but nothing that I would say at the level of computer science or, you know, moving to the next level or even a more advanced level without shipping it off to DMAC or Iowa State. We have a new addition to a building, where we have a couple beautiful classrooms where we can incorporate some 21st century learning workspace, where I think you could do some really neat things. The challenging, challenging part is going to be finding a person, you know, there's not, like I said, the endorsement is not really out there, there's not tons of people that have computer science endorsements. Most of your computer science people are computer science majors that could pick up a methods class in education and then be certified to teach computer science. So it's a little tricky, finding who those people are, and then making it a halftime position is even more tricky. So, but there's some opportunities to do some combining some things, and I just feel like it's a good opportunity to move forward. While I've been sitting here, while some of the other things were going on, I've been researching, you know, 40 schools up and down and what they offer in computer science, and there's a variety of things from web design to coding to programming to video production to, I mean, it's just a variety of schools offer a variety of things. Some schools offer just the basic level entry stuff like Microsoft programming and Google apps and things like that, but I would like to think we're moving a little beyond that and heading toward a different vision, but that's kind of the thought process behind that, so.
At the ISB convention, I went and sat in on the OCE schools, and so they were trying to figure out how to do this. And so they were integrating it into each, they were doing this collaboration thing that they were doing it cross.
Content areas or?
Yeah, yeah, so you could be in biology and it's got a computer science element to enough. I didn't get exactly how that all was going to work out, but, but if, if you wanted a school that's kind of at least, you know, running this K through 12, and I don't know that's what we want to do, but I thought at least it's kind of interesting going with what you were talking about, Carrie, it's like, okay, how do we communicate and collaborate this and kind of have some real world, you know, what this might look like, you know, K through 12? But, but I just throw that out there, if, if you're looking for some ideas on how we maybe incorporate this.
One thing, absolutely. As we are going down this road, that we need to do is a crosswalk as to what is, I mean, there are things happening in classrooms where, I mean, I'm going to use Chrissy Linen, her classes, I mean, she's, she is incorporating a lot of, of technology into what she's doing. So I think looking at how, how do those parts and pieces fit overall into our technology plan is another thing that we, that we have to do.
Yeah, because I'm always saying it's going to be interwoven.
And everything you do.
And everything you do, and so then you say, how are we going to weave it in, you know, that it's just part of what a portrait of a graduate looks like when you get done.
That's the direction where we, I envision us heading with our new CTE lab anyways. It's a space that multiple areas can work together towards solving problems and doing things, and having somebody that has some expertise in the building in those areas is a vital part of the process. You know, there's going to be some guidance at some point where you're going to be able to check out some boxes. If you do these things, that qualifies as computer science. But, and most schools will do that, they'll check out, we have this, we have this, we need the requirement, but I would like to think we go above and beyond this. You know, we're looking to add programming, we're looking to do innovative things and different things, and things that our patrons are looking for, you know, the workforce that our clientele is going to be in, so something different.
To me, this category, and I'm curious what the state of Iowa is suggesting, what their language is, because I look at it like, we have a lot of stuff right now that's like technology-heavy, which is great, but then there's this whole other category of like, how do we use computers to automate things? And that's what I look at in this, this thing. It's not just like, how do I use PowerPoint, or like, how do I make a website or design a graphic? Like, how do I teach the computer to do the stuff I don't want to do anymore? And that's in this category, and so like, this is the kind of stuff that, that, I'm, I'm, this is my profession, so I'm excited about this stuff, and I think we have a real good chance to do it great. And I know we have a lot of engaged community members too in this topic, as represented in the forums, but also just in my kind of nerdy circle of dads here, like, a lot of software engineers that would be willing to give guidance or help or guest lecture, you know, whatever we would call it in this category. So I'm really excited about it. I know we're talking about this afterwards too, but.
And right now, in the, the phase that I'm in is we're just trying to gather as much information. What are, what are some possibilities? What can we do, you know? Because there's not been a lot of guidance, like, when you add an English teacher, you kind of have a general idea of what you're adding. You've got a framework you work within. You know, math, you're adding a variety of these different topics, but, you know, in this topic, depending on who you talk to, they're going to give you a different definition of computer science. And so we just want to find something that is innovative and different and engaging to kids, so.
Brian, I'm just forwarding you, we, our state person is Cindy Butler, she's the DE person, and I had asked her for the wording on the, how the state is working with this as far as putting out the computer science. You can take a look at it, it's about as clear as mud, but I think it's, it would be, if you, you know, like that type of thing, I'd pass that on to you.
I live for it, thank you.
I've got a question for you, Vic. When, when we're trying to put together, you know, like, the, the high school class schedules, and, and I know the last time we talked, we said, you know, generally, kids are, you know, they have some room in their schedule. Would there be a possibility that you could do like, nine and 10 is kind of, you know, kind of find interest in, in some of these computer areas that you would find, and then we'd finish those out perhaps with, with the DMACs or with Iowa State, so that we would just build career tracks of, hey, if you're into data management, we're going to expose you to it as freshmen and sophomores, and then you say, this is what I engage in, I love this. And then we kind of can, can hand that off, and, and maybe not even hand it off, that as we get really good at it, you know, that we can just do that as juniors and seniors. But I was wondering if that would be an affordable way, that we could start, you know, thinking up some career tracks, not just in technology, but in, in other things? And, and if we could get them to figure that out as freshmen and sophomores, perhaps that, that's something I would engage in? And then we could kind of, you know, schedule, you know, kind of schedule to it once they're kind of like, boy, this, this is for me. Now, that might be a pipe dream, because I know when I was a college sophomore, I didn't really know what I wanted to do, but for the people that do, you know, I could see some real value in, in, you know, kind of giving some people some guidance into some great careers if, if, if we could use people like Brian to, to figure out of, hey, here's where, what the future looks like now.
And we do, we do do that, you know, like our freshman year is, is really designed toward taking elective classes and getting excited about things at the high school. And we have different career paths through our CTE department, through, you know, agriculture, through food, family consumer science, and through, you know, construction and trades, and we have different pathways they can explore, different levels of classes they can take. And then as they, you know, become juniors and seniors, when their schedules start opening up a little bit, you know, they have a lot of flexibility to take a variety of classes. Now, the one problem is as their schedules start to open up a little more, they're juniors and seniors, what do they want to do? They start taking classes at Iowa State and DMAC, and so, you know, they're, we want to create an experience at our high school where they're getting those things and, and building toward meaningful experiences in their junior, senior years, looking at internships, things like that, where they can get real-world experience doing things. That's the direction like Buildings and Trades is heading. You know, by the time you're a junior or senior, you're working toward apprenticeships. That's where we hope to get at some point.
So that would even be better, that'd even be better than secondary, it'd be real-life experience and internship.
Yeah, it's hard when you compete against college credit, which will be.
I would say in this, in this field in particular, after spending last three years hiring software engineers, what we see is like a lot of the colleges are just behind, like, they aren't producing like career-ready students, and you can actually demonstrate competency without a degree in this particular field. And so I've hired a lot of people that don't have college degrees in computer science or software engineering, and they're just as competent as those who do, not to discredit what the, this, like, the larger colleges are doing, but I, what I see a lot of times is that just because this is a new field, that sort of the formalized education is five years behind the industry and in computer time, that's a really big time. And so, I'm, anyway, I don't, we don't need to keep talking about this necessarily, but I think this is phenomenal, and we have a chance to really have a fresh thought on how we want to take this teacher and maybe have them, him or her, like, interludes, even how we think about it, sprinkling it across the rest of the K-12 stuff, sounds phenomenal.
Yeah, I agree.
Should we take a look at number six?
Sorry, yes, thank you.
Okay. The, number six, you know that we have a preschool right now, you know that we have a kindergarten, but this K prep, I had an opportunity to work with Stacy a few years back, we had a kindergarten prep one of the years, and I think that we went away from that because of some of the things that the state was talking about, what they wanted to see with that program.
Right, so, you know, about the time that we discontinued our programs when the early literacy kind of requirements came out, and kind of how that was going to play out, and we just didn't feel with, and at the same time, we were coupled that with a pretty long waiting list for preschool. So went ahead and discontinued K prep and went to four sections of preschool. I think just as we've now, we're a couple of years into Eli, and we have an idea of what that looks like for our kiddos and, and instruction, I don't think I could couple that with a preschool position, but I think if I ran a program 805 to even noon or somewhere, you know, still a half-day program, which is really what our parents in K prep want, for the most part, they don't want, they're, a lot of them are young, and they don't want them going all day yet. I think we can meet any requirements that we need to, and the state, it's definitely a program that our parents would like to see in place. We did survey our current preschool kiddos, and I have 10 students in our current preschool that would like to be part of a K prep in next year, which I think, even if we only had those 10, I think it would still be, you know, financially, because of how that funding stream works for K prep. And then we know we have, I, you know, we did an interview, a building tour yesterday with someone who would be interested in that program if they came to Gilbert, and then... someone who would be interested in that program if they came to Gilbert and then another. So I I think right now I've got about 12 in the hopper for that.
What would be the max one that you?
I think 16, because what I'd like to do to keep it financially is not hire an associate for that position and just leave it as a classroom teacher. So I think if we were able to operate within 10 to 16. That's not, that being said, if we really felt like we had 18 to 20 kiddos who really wanted that program, I think just maybe having that conversation about bringing in maybe an associate to help support, just because obviously those kiddos are going to that program for a reason and usually some social or some developmental things to.
And space-wise?
Yeah, make it work. Don't tell everybody in our building how that's going to happen. It'll all be fun. Not the portable. They will be in the building, but there might be some other shared spaces happening. And I would keep it with kind of in the existing area of kindergarten right now, so.
And you can tell that we talked about, you know, $15,000, and she talked about the Eli, the Early Literacy Initiative. We got all kinds of acronyms in education, so yeah, just to make sure everyone's on the same page.
We do get a grant every year to help support your early literacy implementation. We've used that for a variety of different things over the years, a lot of curriculum, but you can use professional development, and then just really anything that's going to be geared towards improving early literacy, in my mind, adding a K prep program, which is technically an at-risk position or program, using that, some of those funds to offset the cost of that.
Are those kiddos fully funded?
Those kids are fully funded, yes. So it's kind of a, yeah.
So you're thinking 16?
No. I'm just wondering, once upon a time, they didn't get full funding.
No, they've always gotten full funding. It's been, it's just, it's one thing that has gone back and forth about how to do that funding, because the majority of alternative kindergarten programs in the state don't run full day, but they still get, they are considered kindergartners.
Gotcha.
And it just provides more options.
It does, it's just, yeah. It's 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 why we went to it the first time and then had a couple, you know, curveballs thrown at us, but I think I think it would be a forum and once we had it in place would be.
We have an outstanding preschool, we have an outstanding kindergarten. This is parent demand and community demand, and this would be an outstanding program too. Number seven, if we take a look at this, we talked about point two five of the salary for Carrie from the general fund. And what what happened was when we started with this TLS, that was some of the time when we were going through some challenging times as far as overall to see the different types of funding. And one of the things that we said was that we were going to try to get back to the the point where that salary that she has through the TLS was going to be coming back to the general fund. We can't, we we've talked about this and I, you know, Carrie, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, so I don't want you to feel bad, but I think that we've talked about trying to do this gradually rather than to do it all at once. I think that's physically responsible. And I, again, I think that that's, you see a backfill, the teacher's the one that we do the backfill on, that's why you see that in there.
We, when when we originally got the TLS grant, the people that were pulled out of the classroom, I don't know if you remember this, but their backfills are actually paid for through TLS, because we wanted to make sure that the people that, like my salary and whomever's, was still part of the general fund. But this way, I mean, this will take four years if we do a quarter for the next, you know, starting next year, if we were able to do that quarter each year, then, so Jody, who is, was originally would be the backfill in first grade, her salary will, a quarter come out of the general fund now, and three quarters out of TLS, and then it will change each year. And then that way, my position is we can do something else without those TLC funds at that time. And whether we decide we want to do a couple other positions or, now, we're, we are, there's some restraints there because of the requirements, those people have to be within, I mean, have to be in-house. We can't hire them out when we're looking at TLS funds, because it's about teacher leadership with them.
Questions on that one? The next one, we've talked in different meetings about this, and we've talked long and hard about this administratively and trying to see what we can do to put our best foot forward. What we're proposing is a 1.0 FTE, but 0.25 of that will be behavioral, and 0.75 of that would be like at-risk support or special ed funds. We we know that, and you know, if you talk to these administrators, we know that we're dealing with mental health and behavior issues, and this position would help us to serve the needs in all four buildings, and that is probably quite a bit right now, but we're, I think we're trying to get steps in the right direction there. This position would work directly with students as well as providing classroom support to teachers when creating the interventions and the behavior plans. We've talked, I mean, there's there's schools that do a lot of different things, but when we talked about it, we felt pretty good, I think, as a team when we came to this, as a model that we could go ahead and use to help with some of these kids that maybe have behavioral, mental health issues. You guys want to add anything to that?
I would just say that, you know, we have the support through Heartland, but we're sharing those, we're sharing those people. And this this would be somebody that that is in-house and really is getting to know our kids. And working with our teachers. So it's support for our teachers and our associates, and, I mean, we see that as a person that could do, bridge a lot of things there.
You can see the funding source. I didn't mean to interrupt you. You can see the funding source that we are looking at to go ahead and handle that. You want to say something?
Well, what I was going to say is, you know, Carrie's talking about we do use the AEA, but as you start moving further away from the schools, remember those AEA staff work with a variety of districts? So you might have one district psychologist that works with 2,000 students, you know, so they're at the mercy of wherever their appointments are for the day and things like that. So having a body available, similar to the job that I had two years ago, that a person's available to move around, work with teachers, help, you know, develop strategies with kids, make connections, build relationships, work with teachers to help, you know, sharpen their tools, things, work with students that struggle. I think it's, you know.
What sort of qualifications are are you thinking for that role? You use the term psychologist.
Well, that's, I'm just talking, like, as you move further out, further out, you know, like, our AEA staff gets pretty stretched out over the course of a variety of, you know, districts.
We were, we're assuming a lot of people who may be either, who may have guidance or be working towards a guidance counselor degree, so have that. We talked about social worker, you know, something like that. Could have the spec, yeah, definitely, you know, really.
It just depends on, you know, the skill sets of your applicants also, you know, just.
That's what we're having that conversation. We, we, because we kind of at one point had two different positions, sort of just somebody who's really just focused on behavior pieces, and then maybe a social worker. And so in our mindset, it really is more that social worker piece, really, that has some of that support to be able to help teachers when they're creating plans in classrooms, but also building those bridges with students and and really being an additional resource for.
And so it's, it describes across all, goes across all four buildings, but is there a stronger emphasis in the older kids or is it not necessarily that? And how do you, I mean, it gets down to like the bottom one here, nurse, well, it's best to have one in every building, right?
I'm sorry, when you start looking at building prevention plans, kind of address it, we've kind of discussed that it may be something that it's, they're more focused on the lower levels. Because as you're building those prevention plans, you want to build from the bottom, you don't build from the top down. You want to get kids early, you want to work with kids early, you want to build those skills. And then as they get older, they're more able to have the coping mechanisms to deal with difficult situations versus now you've got a 17-year-old that's already there, you know? So the person would probably be heavily, you know, focused on more intermediate elementary, but be a resource for middle school and high school as issues come up and as things, you know, pop up. But that's just my thought. I mean, you guys can speak to the conversations we've had as well, but.
No, I was just going to add on, because, I mean, you're spot on with that, Vic. And that, knowing that we have put some extra resources already at the high school where we've got the two guidance counselors, and we do have Jordan that does that does some at the middle school too, so that would allow us to have more support at our lower grades. Not saying that, then you've got a department. I mean, right, I mean, we've got a guidance counseling department that is all working together, but this would be the same thing, but really focusing more at the lower level.
Ultimately, I mean, would you envision that there's one at every school? Or I mean, where does, or this is new to our district and we got to start somewhere?
Little new. Just as a frame of references, we've had something like, like, Ankeny has, I believe they said eight social workers district-wide. So to kind of think about size of district approximately, you know, I think we're, starting at one is a good place. It may be one that we end up, you know, one six 12 and one, you know, pre-K five at some point. I'm not sure when we're ready to grow that, but.
You know, larger districts, like, you know, I could just speak to my own experiences. You know, we had two of these types, well, probably four of these types of people just in the middle school, and then 12 under. You know, so it just depends on the size of your district. But I think Stacy's kind of right on track, like, you know, over time, maybe you have somebody that works with upper-level kids and lower-level kids, because the needs are different, you know, they have a lot more, they get more advanced and the situations become much more critical as they get older, there's much more at stake and things, the little ones don't have the similar issues that the older ones have. But they have issues, and and a lot of that is focused around prevention and building those skills and helping them develop coping skills when they're in the situations they they react in an appropriate way or be able to power through some difficult situations. So I think it's just adding another piece toward what can we do to support students.
And I think this will be appreciated by staff, because I think that they're, they're looking for some help in how do we handle some of these difficult situations. So I think that this will hopefully be a good, they're all good, but I think this will be something that they will really appreciate. I'm going to go ahead to the next one unless there's any questions. The next one, you know, we have a situation where in this building, we're using this a lot for, we use mega nights, and there's a lot of things that happen in this building. And the, one of the things that we talked about is hiring a part-time custodian to make sure that we have someone that's here, that's closing, making sure that things are taken care of. You know, it's it's definitely something, I think that we at one time maybe had that and then cut back a little bit, and I think that we need to put that in there so that, you know, everything is closed and clean and hitting the mark. And you know that down the road that we're going to be looking at with the addition of those middle and high rooms, we're going to have to be looking at that too. The last one is a nurse associate. What we have right now is we have two people that are nurses within our district and one nurse associate. And the the way it works at the elementary and intermediate is really a good, I think, something to kind of model off of, and that's the fact of, that in, and I don't know, I mean, Stacy can tell you as far as how, when they change as far as the associate and the nurse, but one, it may be like in Stacy's building, the associate will be there one of the weeks, and in this, the other week, during that same week, the nurse will be here in this particular building. Whereas what happens over at the Mike's building, hey, Mike, how's it going?
Sorry.
No, you're fine. As in Mike's building and Vic's building, they have a nurse, but they share it between the two. And the concern is that there are different health needs that our kids are having, and as we're getting bigger, we want to make sure that we're covering those and having people there that can help that issue. So the proposal on this would be that we would be looking at a middle school, high school nurse associate. What they would do is, so like, when the nurse Laura is at, let's say, the high school, then the associate would be at the middle school. And then Stacy, do you guys have a rotation that you do?
So we've done a little bit different, different times. So we used to have a schedule pretty, that one would be there Monday, Wednesday, Friday, one Tuesday, Thursday. We've done week by week. Right now, I have a particularly medical fragile, medically fragile student in my building, so Jenna's kind of, kind of stand put in my building. And that's the same as Jenna kind of spent more time at the intermediate. We used to have a student who had some some needs, and so it's just an opportunity for that. The Dana Leonard is the nurse associate between my building and Amy's building, and we, she had, took some additional training, med management, some different things, and so.
And right now, you know, Laura is, you know, looking at serving close to 900 students between the two buildings. And that's a lot of students at times. You know, not all those students are sick and have needs, but there's, you know, I can only speak to my building, there's pretty good traffic of kids that want to see her throughout the day, and sometimes she's available, sometimes she's not, and sometimes things pop up and we have to call her and she has to come over. You know, she does have some, you know, medically fragile kids in Mike's building that she monitors very closely.
It's a model that a lot of larger districts go with, so as their buildings increase and they add elementaries, they kind of have one overseeing nurse who manage, make sure the, make sure the paperwork is in order, and then they have associates housed in the buildings.
Do they do any proactive, like, teaching or anything around health?
We used to do that, but we don't.
And she teaches first aid.
First aid, that's right.
She teaches first aid and standard health.
We used to have a class that, a while ago, that our nurse did teach, but.
But right now, in the format she has, I don't think she would have time to do anything like that.
No, but I'm asking in the context of if this position came on, and I like what you've described on some of these other roles where you can try to be more proactive, right? Well, versus a nurse sitting in there going, who's sick next, who's sick next?
I think there's an opportunity if she felt like she had the flexibility to do that. Like, right now, I think if you spoke to her, she'd say, she might be pretty fragile.
We don't want her to leave.
And licensure can be an issue with that too. I mean, you have to get, you'd be pretty confined to what a nurse could teach, you know, because they're licensed under public health instead of licensed through education.
But she can speak, she can be a classroom speaker.
But you can talk about influenza and you can do things about.
You know, as a guest speaker.
Yeah, she can be a guest speaker.
Are there any questions on the things? One of the things that we wanted to do, I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but I want you to feel comfortable, so if you're asked by people, you can talk to them about what we're looking at. And the other thing that we talked about administratively is, we want to get things rolling and get out in the hunt for some of these people to fill these spots. So any questions?
So it looks like, not quite, but almost six total FTE.
Is that what it comes up to?
And you're saying, Gail, if I understood right back to the finances, that fits in the budget, still maintaining for increases, an estimate there, but based on zero supplemental aid and maintaining solvency.
This total estimated is 297,383.
And there's additional.
We've got 3,000 more to spend, come on.
And this is, you know, things may change, it depends on our applicant pool, you know? So these are just estimates.
And that's what's pretty strict guidelines of where we can hire and where we can't. You know, we're setting some some base numbers and you're kind of locked in at, you know, where you can hire and things like that. But, you know, you do your best. But I think, you know, with the numbers, we came in pretty, pretty good. And that was a, quite the process. We spent several meetings, kicking things back and forth.
So do you need a motion from us? You just need our blessing, you just wanted to share?
We're moving forward unless we hear something differently from you. I guess anything else? I I just want to make sure you're comfortable, and like I said, you know, there's some, the people that may ask you questions, and I want to make sure you're feeling comfortable.
There's a lot of good.
Yeah, I like the information, I like the conversation, I like knowing that you guys have been thinking through this. There's two things that it needs to fit into, and that's the financial plan and then going back to what's the long-term staffing plan, right? Because now, at least two, but two of these are new, which is great, but where does that go, right? And so what we don't want to do is is continue to make decisions just one year at a time.
Right.
So I like the idea of that position on on intervention or behavior, but my question would be, well, then we need forum, right? But so those are, those are things when you, when you wade into it, it's nice to have a long-term plan. So that that's, I I think this is a good direction, and as long as the assumptions that Gail's walked through hold true, then that makes sense, fit it into the financial plan, fit it into the organizational plan.
Well, and I like, I'm sorry.
We did look, you know, we did look at several years forecasting ahead. I mean, we do have a little bit of a unique situation with a couple of bubble groups coming through our middle school. And then we've looked at three or four classes behind that, and, you know, their, their, the classes are much smaller than this bubble group that's coming through, and so, you know, there will be needs in the future. But we did look several years out, and we were trying to think about where we want to go. And, you know, just in a short period of time, you know, three years ago, we did not have very low at-risk staff here, if any. You know, we moved to two counselors at the high school, you know, we've got a lot, a lot, we've moved the ball quite a ways in a short period of time, I think, with a lot of services to support students. You know, so I do appreciate that, though. That is good to think about.
Yeah, a large chunk of our at-risk funding in past years has really gone to more academic support. You know, we have some reading and math and catch-up, you know, tutoring type services. But I think this is really more in the mental health arena and.
Right. Well, your segue into that is great because I think the next thing that's going to come up is going to be talking about, you can call it at-risk, you can call it dropout prevention. On, in January, we will ask you for formal approval on this. This is just to let you know kind of where things are and what, what is involved in this. If you take a look at FY '19, you can take a look at the, basically the amount that we have. If you take a look at FY '20, the amount that we're going to be working with is a 309,647. What we have down below, and I, you know, we could have put down some of these have some names on them, some of them don't. I just wanted you to get an idea. And, you know, if you have some questions about, you know, specific things as far as, like for instance, that 1.5 FTE, that's a elementary school para-interventionist. That would be a situation that is helping at the elementary. And you can take a look at that. The intermediate school is a 1.5. The middle school is a 1.5. And the high school has a 2.25. Some of the things that, I don't know who was it that said it, that we've gone more, I think it was maybe Stacy that said something, but we've gone more to even looking at things like the, the at-risk strategist. You can tell, that's the one that Vic was talking about. We have some capabilities at the high school where we can use that person in a variety of ways. We also have the at-risk strategist in the intermediate school. We do some things with our guidance, as you can tell. Some of that is taken, their salary is taken out of that. And we're talking about the new amount that we would be looking at would be the $9,750. That would be a point five that FTE that would be coming out for that associate principal at the high school.
Point one five.
What?
Point one five.
What did I say?
Point five.
Oh, sorry. Point one five. Thank you. Thank you. There are also some things that go with that. We do have edge annuity. Edge annuity is just a fancy way to say credit recovery. They use it differently. And it's mainly used in Mike's building and Vic's building. I think that they may use it differently depending on where the students at and what they need. YSS Mentory, we've done that, like I said, a number of years. And then we're a part of the DMAC At-Risk Consortium. We also have on here, one of the things that was, another new part of this was we transport a student to the Woodward Academy and we tag-team that with Nevada. So that's a part of the overall, the transportation part of that. So you can take a look at what we have there as far as the amount of money. We would keep the things that we have and then we would add, where they, where you see the new is where we'd add to that.
This is a different process that's, the legislation changed it. It used to be the process would be that we would submit an application to the Department of Ed. They would approve it. And then we would come to you asking the funding. Now, last year, they changed it to it's the board's decision on the application and the funding now. So the Department of Ed only wants to see that you're taking action on it. It's due by January 15th. So that's why we're bringing it to you tonight. And then it will be official approval on the 14th, which is the night before, in January. So the process has changed. And the maximum modified supplement is 309,647 versus last year was 298. And this is property taxes. And so we have an increase of $11,000. So that's, the process has changed. And so that's why we're bringing it to you tonight for the first time. Because in the past, it was actually, we submitted it to the Department of Man, or Department of Ed.
But unlike the previous topic, which were all new hires, these are current staff. It's just covering their costs in a different way.
Right, except for those two new ones.
Yeah. We've got a certain bucket of money. And so as we hire people, people come, people, you know, the FTEs probably won't change, but the people behind those FTEs may change. And that happens every year. This is a budget for fiscal year '20.
I'm going to ask a John question, channeling my inner banker. I see news roughly 20,000, but the increase is only like 11,000 between the difference there, right?
No, no.
All right, good.
No. I just wanted to say new, as in new to the application.
I see.
New. We did not have this at-risk principle. Will be new next year. Okay? That was not on the previous year's applications. The Woodward Academy is just new. We never, we didn't have to fund that in the past. It's new. Now we're going to fund it or include it on the application.
Oh, I see.
So the money's not going to add up, but we still have to stay within the 309.
I see. Okay.
And there's a, there's a, there's a formula for this. 309 is the modified supplement. The district has to provide 25% more on top of that. So this is actually 75% funding. And then 25% is general fund.
Okay.
So it's a combination. This modified supplement needs action because of property taxes.
In January, we take action, right?
In January.
Okay, this makes sense. Thank you.
So the whole, the whole at-risk or the whole dropout, it's a combination of at-risk, which is around 25,000. The district has to put in 25% in general funds. And then 75%, which is this 309, is a combination of different, coming together for a program, a dropout prevention program.
One of the things that the state has done, and I have to applaud them for that, is the fact that they've allowed us some flexibility with this.
A lot of flexibility.
Before, you can talk to some of these administrators, well, it was a nightmare to try to do this. I think that we've been able to move forward on this type of thing because of this flexibility. And I think it's allowed us to hit some of the different things as far as dropout, prevention, mental health, just a variety of things. I'm just giving it to you now. I will come back to you for approval. I have one last thing. I know I've taken a long time. And Kim, I don't know if you want to jump in here. I did have a chance to talk to Jim Verlinda and John Schaldau. One of, everything's good to go on the January 9th, which is on a Wednesday. They wanted me to let you know that they're looking at about three questions. And those three questions, and they said if your board, you know, gets turned around on this and they don't like it, let me know. The, you know, what are some, when they break it down into the groups, and I think that we looked at parents, we looked at teaching slash staff, so that we want to make sure we have support staff and teaching staff, students, alumni, and then, I don't know, Kim, what we called it was city business, community, society. I don't, I don't know. Here's the three questions that they're going to break off into. The, talk about the strengths at Gilbert, talk about the areas of improvement, and where should the district be going from there? Kind of those are the general questions that they were looking at.
And this is to get at the values and the portrait of a graduate?
No, this is for the district priorities.
Okay.
This is what we're using.
So it's not, it's not being used to portrait of a graduate?
I think that there will be valuable information that comes out that will benefit, Carrie, if we share that information. But the priority of the AEA's work is.
Three to five-year priorities.
The three to five-year priorities, yes.
And one of the things, too, because, and I guess, I think some conversations that we've had are, we just don't want to make this a one-night deal. This thing that we're doing on the 9th is just the first step in putting together that plan. And I, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail because you guys know, we've had different conversations on that. But this is just the first step of putting that together.
What was the third question? Sorry.
I don't know that I have. They, they were kind of bouncing around. What should be, what should the district be doing to move forward? Things like that.
Sort of what's your dreams?
Yep.
Because I want to see something like that.
Yep. Are you guys, John told me, called me first thing in the morning, but this is not what your board is wanting. Are you guys okay with what you've heard?
Or, or maybe are there questions? Is there a question you think we're missing?
Can you read those three again? I'm sorry. What, the strengths of Gilbert, areas of improvement, and where, what should we be, you know, the district be heading for or doing? And I don't, the last one, they were kind of, they were kind of wish-washing that. Just another thing, someone had asked in a conversation that I'd had about should we send out the questions ahead of time? Their recommendation was no. And the, they said that they, not that we couldn't, that their recommendation was no, that when we get into our groups and start to talk about these things, that what will happen is they'll be given some time to talk about it. And then we want everyone in those groups sharing information. And then what will happen is there'll be recorders that will be in each of the rooms. And they will go ahead and put that information into a Google Doc. Then we'll start to decipher some of that.
Sounds like just kind of SWAT, which is pretty, pretty common. So strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats.
Yep. Okay. That's, that's all I have. Sorry, that was a long time.
I just think, I'm sorry, one more thing is, since we're not sending the questions out ahead of time. I think, you know, as, as you're laying there in bed tonight, you're thinking about school boards, because that's what we all do, right? If a question pops into your head that you think is important, really please understand this, the work that they're doing isn't done. There's still wordsmithing. They're still working with their team. So send your thoughts to Lindsay, because he's working as the point person with John and, you know.
So back probably a month ago, when we were working on that along with goals that we talked through tonight, we'd also talked about a plan for this, right? So I just want to be, want to make sure we're clear. But last night, we said, well, that's what Lindsay will be providing, right? So it's not you, it's.
I'm just for point.
What you're saying. Okay. And so with that, as you just described, well, January 9th is a starting point.
Right.
But I think sooner rather than later, it'd be nice to say, okay, then this is what we expect, working with Jim and John and the AEA, right?
Yep.
So, good.
Okay. All right. So we took 15 minutes on this topic, almost, almost 60 on the administrative reports. It was really good to hear all the staffing things. I'm not saying poop with that, but I want to be very mindful of time that.
I bet you can do it 20 minutes.
So I would like to ask all of us, yes, if we could cruise through the rest of this agenda in about 20 minutes. Out of respect for Rule 1 being probably over time already. So, um, sorry, I'm, sorry, that's a kind of mean thing to say, but I feel responsible for this. We have announcements and celebrations. Jeff, three seconds. No, I'm just kidding. Are there any really amazing things that are happening?
Yes, I just have one quick one. Carolyn Miller has just, we got a letter that she's received an awesome opportunity to travel abroad and represent Gilbert High School. She's been attending some classes on global citizenship and what it means to be a global citizen. And as applied to be part of a group that is learning more about how to enrich experiences for students when they go overseas, what to bring back, how to facilitate groups, large groups when they're going to other countries. And she, she wrote an application process to get to go to a conference to learn more about this, thinking like, oh, there's like 10,000 people that are going to get it. She got selected.
Nice.
And it's a five days trip to Paris.
Wow.
So she's going to spend five days in Paris studying how to facilitate large group trips abroad and how to bring back things from those. And just a really cool opportunity for her, so.
Just quick, what organization or what's, what's the funding?
You know, I don't know right off the top of my head. And I had the flyer and I left it pending on my bulletin board.
It'd be good, maybe you can circulate it later. I'd be interested to just know the funding organization.
She attended a big workshop at Iowa City and learned a lot about what it means to be a global citizen, how to incorporate global education into what we do, how to get people to think beyond their community and their state and their country and think worldwide. And then she just threw her name in the, this application process and got selected. And it's just a.
That's awesome.
A really neat deal, so.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to talk about?
They're all afraid to.
Scared of you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, don't lighten up now.
All right, sorry, all right.
Yeah, you're doing good.
Trying to run the gas. All right, let's talk about closing this facility up, Lindsay. Over the break, from December 22nd to the 26th, this will be closed so the custodians can get to do some work.
That's right.
Okay?
That's what I mean.
Any, any board members would like to talk about the ISB annual convention? I know we've had a couple of meetings already, but no, no public ones since then to talk about learnings or interesting things that.
It's been a while, hasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, we've met multiple times, but I don't know if we've ever sat down to talk about these things.
I'd suggest that we do, but not tonight.
I like that.
Might be, I hate to say work session, but there are learnings, but I think that's.
Well, maybe put it back on.
Let's do it.
Any idea?
Let's do it in Jan, can we do it in January?
Let's take a look at the agenda in January. I mean, we want to have the time to make it a valuable discussion, not just cram it in somewhere, right?
Ouch. Yeah, no, you're totally right.
No, right. Okay.
And then the next, they, I agree with you, Tyler and Kim. The next one is the joint session with the City of Gilbert on January 21st. It works for me that night to meet. Does it work for you all as well?
Tonight's previous appointment has been rescheduled to that, so I will not be there.
Okay, excellent.
And does that, yeah, that's just a joint meeting, but not our board meeting?
Yeah, we're not, we're not in session. We're not taking action on that. We're just meeting with them as a work session.
I think it's a good opportunity for us to give a really good update on where we're at, you know, from a facility standpoint. And not, not a great depth, but just have the conversation. And I think from the city standpoint, some of their new zone zoning for their new development and talking about where streets might go. And I think just good dialogue that way.
All right, I'm going to move into old business of the second reading of these board policies. I'm just going to preface this because I'm on the policy committee. We had extensive conversation about one of these policies, which is the one that, and I can't remember the, I think it's 604.6, instruction of post-secondary institutions. We are allowed a third reading, if I recall, if we want. Is this right, Gail? And I would say that we would love to approve all of them, but that, if there is continued conversation about that policy, remember, this is the one talking about who's qualified to take classes outside of our campus. What are sort of.
I would have just one thing that, you know, that, that topic kind of get addressed when we, when we go through those ones with the students. I would love to have their perspective on, you know, on are we providing enough flexibility?
Oh, when Jim and John run that.
When we run the student group through or the ones that had gone through, you know, so that we.
Recent grads?
Yeah, recent grads.
Oh, great, yeah. Do you feel comfortable submitting that question to Lindsay this evening or early tomorrow? I don't know when these, these gentlemen need it.
No, no, not as a question, just as something that gets brought up with, is ever, you know, we would just say, pay for that, that group.
Okay.
You know, of, of, you know, either current, current high school folks or, or recent graduates or even the parents, I guess, for that matter. But at any rate, just have some ears to say, you know, how can we do it better? And maybe there is no answer, but, but I'm good with moving ahead on this. But I, I do just want to be mindful that I have had some teachers complain, or not teachers, some parents say, we need more flexibility. We don't have it. And I think the scale kind of leads you to that. Well, I can't take it because I got to take this class, so therefore I can't move scale. And I know that it may be an insolvable thing, but at any rate, I just want to be, be a good listener with regard to that.
And we can bring this particular policy up and review it and talk about it anytime. It doesn't, we don't have to.
Yeah, I don't want to hold it up and wordsmith it tonight, but I just want to put that out there. That's the little voice that's in my head as to why I was talking more about that. And Vic and I had a pretty good discussion last time about it, so.
Is this in the pile because ISB has made a change or because it's just time for us to.
ISB has made.
All of these are in that category. These are revised ones.
Okay, so I would agree with Brian that I'm comfortable with all of them. I think this one deserves a closer look. And so if we can do a third read.
Yeah, we'll just pull that one out.
With some of the things that we're talking about doing and some of the positions that we're talking about adding in with the new CTE room and some opportunities we might have, I think this deserves a third look. But yes, I would agree that the others are ready to roll. So I'd make a motion if there's no other conversation.
Sorry. Sorry, just to approve the second reading of all of them minus 604.6?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And you have, we have a second one, John? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. Thank you all for this. Moving over to the backside of the paper, cruising down to 602 preschool playground resurfacing quotes. Stacy's got some quotes that she's got, and there's no way that I can read that. Thank you. I think this is for your preschool. Is that right, Stacy?
Yes.
And she had, when she talked about some, are you using Eli dollars for this?
I am not. We have some preschool.
Preschool, sorry.
Really over puns. Is it fully funded? Fully funded through preschool. Really?
Wow.
Wow. Good job.
And it looks like, is it...
Would you like to call it the preschool baseball field?
What's our naming policy say?
And we do, and it just so happens, this is concurrent with, we have two students who are wheelchair-bound this year and so I think the rubber mulch is technically ADA compliant, it just really increases that because really we found the wheelchairs cannot move on that mulch at all.
So, Stacy, do we have mulch in there now?
We have rubber mulch, the treaded tires.
Okay.
And, and what's gonna be the best?
It's gonna be basically a poured rubberized surface.
Oh, okay.
Is what it will, that's what this bid will include and so there's two bids. The, the first bid included the actual, they need a base, it can be aggregate or concrete and, and in fact, the ABC Creative, which is one that Hala had suggested.
So, you need a motion to follow your recommendation?
ABC Creative's 27,000.
Do you have any concerns on that Stacy?
Not much.
Second. Alright, all in favor to do ABC Creative?
Aye.
Alright, stands approved, thank you all. Gail, summary of the financial reports.
I love the boxes.
Is that, I was trying to think of...
Yeah, that's awesome.
Now, these are getting great and these are so, so useful.
So, I guess the main, I'll keep it short unless somebody wants more detail. So, there's green here, so that's good news, okay?
That was very short.
So, the only, so then, I had mentioned just two little areas on revenue, we're, it's basically on, on page, would be on page two, we have two red areas and that's mainly just a timing of local resources, which is just donations. We have to, I budget donations and the actuals and, you know, who knows when the budget, it's just such a timing thing. The other thing is this year, while we're, we're changing account codes, we're cleaning account codes up and for the longest time, Tim was in instructional function of an account code and he's more of a administration and so that's what you see here of general, I moved him from building, the building administration is just a change of a person from one to another function code, so, not, not a big amount, but those. And so then, the other area I would draw your attention to is, let me see my notes here, cash looks good, recognized investments, purple is all within budget yet and I would like to go to the nutrition. I think we are making slow progress with the staff that we have. Our new hire has been very good. We've seen some positive things and positive leadership, so with that and...
I like seeing her write up in our board pack, by the way, so that was really helpful.
So, with, with this report that I gave you is, there's a couple of things I mentioned. I talked about the cash balance, it's less than last month, the revenues is a decrease and we have some, we've had, showed some increased expenditures and I think it's just a changing of staff and new staff coming in, increasing equipment, buying equipment, staffing, so hopefully those things won't continue and I'll, I'll come back to that. And the participation is at fiscal year 16 levels and I thought, I went back to see, yeah, that's kind of, so hopefully we can increase that, but I did put together a spreadsheet and I don't even think you can read it on here if I bring it up, a burn rate. So, my, my burn rate idea is what I came up with, if we continue the trend of November as a profit, a loss, a net loss of, I'm gonna say 80, I think it's 8,300, I'll look on here, 8,300, can I look at, if we continue that trend, that means that we have, that would give us, we have 14 months before we go negative. Now, that's every month that we continue that trend.
And you think there's a lot at one time in that 8,300, so it's kind of a worst-case scenario.
Yeah, so, with that in mind, we have started investigating, been watching, did a, the process of our food management, contacted and we have a timeline and we've shared that with you guys, they have, okay, so tracking that, that's a process. That's not really our decision, it's not, the Department of Nutrition has to approve that, so we have to go through everything, we have to have a plan, we have to have, get, we have to watch webinar, which we did, we have to read the manual and then basically we do a case study and we have to submit that case study to the food service, to the Department of Nutrition. They, it is more like an 18-month process. So, we started it and we started a, so we'll move forward and continue going, doing that. I plan to, to look at the report, the manual and start that this Christmas break, but, so we started it and we'll see, but with the food service director, she has some great ideas.
She does.
So, that will just help us along the way. At some point, we'll, we don't want to overload her right now, she's, so at some point, we're gonna bring her in on the process because hiring her, we still need that position, no matter what we do. We have to have our own food service director because of the requirements. So, no harms done there, so she would have to be, she'd be part of it. So, right now, Tia and I are just kind of doing some of the legwork, trying to, starting the process and at some point, we'll bring her in on, as we get further down the study. Okay? I will update this every month and so we've got 14 months, but I don't know if that's what you had, an idea for a burn rate.
No, I think that's terrific information and I don't need, I need to see it every month, but if, if you say it's getting better, getting worse, you know, yeah? But it gives us a good opportunity to say, this is, this is when the rubber really hits the road.
Right, and it's, it's good to know what other options are, right? So, you're preparing that at the same time, saying, well, what are we now, turning the ship here with internal resources?
Right.
And what we've discovered in our food service is that a lot of times when the ship's sinking, it'll take a good six months, when you look at things like inventory and stocking the, the vending machines, that's not a...
We have a lot of inventory.
There are times where you have to spend money to eventually make money and I'm excited that she's doing some of the things she's doing right away.
Our vending machines are working and we, we have a very successful, I think our first week of, or three days, it was like $150 worth of sales, so, things that we hadn't seen for quite a while. So, yeah, so I think we're just moving forward. This, the survey that I sent out was very interesting and lots of, I didn't have a negative report on school, on food management, so that was good to see. So, we'll just, we'll keep you updated on our progress and we also have Google Docs that every time we do something, we document it as we go, so, okay? Anything else?
That's good, thanks.
Alright, move on to public forum, looks like there's nobody here except for Omar's wallet possibly is down there actually.
We're not looking.
Oh, no.
Um, I think that's what that is, so, gotta hold in. Anything on the consent agenda?
Um...
Board members, you have anything you'd like to pull out, talk about?
I have a couple of bills that I'd like to just address, nothing, the fundraisers, the activity is lots of officials and, and, lots of officials and we have a couple of big, our big expenses where FFA fundraiser was the first one and the second one is the BAM fundraiser and you guys, I'm sure some of you guys have already purchased some items. The, I wanted to mention that actually because our, we delayed our December meeting, the payroll actually captured November and December liabilities, so these are two months' worth, so. And then the DMAT, I wanted to, that was up there too, our fall courses, wanted, just wanted to say that, tell you that of that 33,800, 25,400 was for on and off DMAT campus tuition and $8,400 of that bill is for an online career academy, to break that down. So, there's 25,400 that went to tuition and that would be tuition-taking classes at online or an actual, and that's just fall, so I wanted to...
Is that 250 a credit or...
250 a person.
250 per class, per semester?
Per class, per person. And then on the, we purchased under management fund for Naptaesco, we purchased a builder's risk for insurance for our project and that was $6,200 and that's the only things I wanted to point out.
Thank you, Gail. Anything else from the board? The, okay, so I need a motion over.
Move to approve the consent.
Thank you.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, stands approved, thank you very much. Quickly talk through the calendar things, I think the important ones for us as a school board is a regular meeting on the 14th. I will be absent, Deb will be running that one.
I'm gonna be absent as well.
Okay.
China on the 14th.
January 14th, I'll be here.
You're in?
I, let me confirm, I think I will.
That was good.
Okay, we have just, we have to have, that is a night we finalize our geobots, so we have to have a...
Yeah, we're just seeing if...
Yeah, no, I can, I can call in, I will be in New York, but I can call in, John, if you are not present.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you, John. Then the next one we talked about is the 21st with the City of Gilbert, Kim is out. And the 22nd, we also have a public hearing for approving the intermediate elementary project bids as they come in and then our regular meeting on the 11th.
Is there a reason why that has to be a day later?
What, oh, well, the other one is the, is a joint meeting. Yeah. Okay. Nevermind. You have any questions?
What's that meeting about? What's the 22nd about?
The, the 22nd is...
Is a public hearing on the specs, just like what we did tonight for the public hearing. And then we have to approve it, so we have a public hearing. So, we'll be here for five minutes.
Hopefully the bids come in.
Five minutes and then the review of the bids, which we don't have as many bids as we did tonight.
Right. Yeah, it'll be intermediate elementary HVAC projects.
Okay, well, I wonder, yeah, so, yeah, alright, got it.
You missed the public forum again, sorry Omar.
Is it time for a public forum?
You leave your wallet here and you can talk as long as you want.
Oh, you guys saw what's in there. I guess you had to. Any questions on that?
I didn't write down any numbers, so you're fine.
Thank you. Alright, do you have a question to adjourn?
Certainly.
Second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned at 8:02.
Two.
Good recovery. Thank you all for jinging that last little bit and I'm really happy we did have that discussion on two-staffing and that was really important.
Well, it's important.
We're gonna hit the recording over here.